No. I have, thank you. Got the electronic copy. Thank you, sir. We'll share it. Soon as we get some. Soon as we get a clerk. Hello, hello, hello. It messed up my stuff. It ain't gonna stay. You got it. Michelle, like, what they turning up? What are they turning up? Mr. Ken, if they, um... If they, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just said you're missing. If they, um, I'll be tipping. Mm-hmm. We got, we got them. I see. And if there's no way streaming? You want to go? You don't need it. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to Cattle Parish Commission's Work Session Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 3:35 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you would, please give us a roll call.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young. Is absent Commissioner Burrell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Here.
All right, you have eleven of twelve Commissioners present, and that does constitute a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones, as we will have our invocation by Commissioner Stefan Jones and our pledge of allegiance by Vice President Ken Epperson. Please stand.
When the Son of Man comes in his glory and all the angels with him, he will sit on his glorious throne. Our nations will be gathered before him, and he will separate the people one from another as the shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right and the goats on his left. And the king will say to those on his right, "Come, you who are blessed by my Father. Take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger, and you invited me in. I needed clothes, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you looked after me. I was in prison, and you came to visit me." Then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when do we see you hungry and feed you or thirsty and give you something to drink? When do we see you as a stranger and invite you in or needing clothes to clothe you? When did we see you sick and in prison and go to visit you? The king will reply, "Truly, I tell you. Whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Then he will say to those on his left, "Apart from me, for you are cursed until eternal fire prepared by the devil and his angels. For I was hungry, and you gave me nothing to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me nothing to drink. I was a stranger, and you did not invite me in. I needed clothes, and you did not clothe me. I was sick and in prison, and you did not look after me." They also will answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty or a stranger or needing clothes or sick or in prison and did not help you?" He will reply, "Truly, I tell you. Whatever you did not do for one of those of the lea- one of the least of these, you did not do for me." Then they will go away into eternal punishment, but the righteous to eternal life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us all stand. I would ask that all gentlemen would please undress, please remove your headgear. Let's face the flag. I would ask that all military and veterans would stand their hand to brow salute. All others, hand, right hand across your heart. Please remember our POWs and our MIA's.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, please remember June the fourteenth of this year is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States Army, which liberated this nation from Britain and gave us our democracy today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Jones and Epperson. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you so much. That brings us to Agenda Additions. And, uh, Madam President, I understood that you did have a couple of Agenda Additions today.
Yes, I do. I have, um, two special, uh, resolutions of remembrance for Reverend Odom as well as Reverend Danny Williams.
Thank you so much. Um, those items, uh, it would be appropriate if you wanted to open a public hearing and then, um, take a vote on the inclusion of those items on today's agenda.
At this time, I would like to open for the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding the following Agenda Addition items? A resolution of remembrance for Reverend Cleonis Odoms and Reverend Danny Williams. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And we have a motion by Vice President Ken Epperson Senior and second by the Chair. Please vote.
Okay, that motion carries with, uh, eleven in support, none in opposition, and one absent. So those items will become eleven point twenty-two and eleven point twenty-three on your agenda today. Uh, and that brings us to the next section, which is Citizens' Comments. Uh, citizens who wish to address the Commission on any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card, uh, and then submit them in the box to my left here. Uh, those comments are limited to three minutes, and, uh, we have received a few. Those have been presented to the, uh, President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I have, um, three cards so far. I have Paige Hoffber. Hoff Power.
You can come to the front.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Sue Garcia. I live at eight thirty-seven Cap'n Street Drive.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I do thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today. This is my first time to attend one of your meetings, and I regret for having to say that, for I have not done my duty to extend, to the extent that I could have, as it instructed by God, to pray for those who are in leadership positions over me, and for that I ask your forgiveness. I'm here today to let you know that from this time forth, I will be faithful to lift you up in prayer, you as well as our mayor, our city council, and our other elected officials. The job that you do is not easy, and I recognize that. When you make decisions that affect the population of this city, this parish, which includes the young, the old, the poor, the rich, the black, the white, the Hispanic, the Asian, it is a very heavy responsibility to wear a governmental mantle as you do. I too have come to learn that I also wear a governmental mantle. This mantle was not put on me through votes obtained through popularity and the democratic process. This mantle was put on me by the Lord. He placed this mantle on me and charged me to be one who would pray for my government, leaders, and to be one who would pray for the welfare of my city, to see that it is protected and that the citizens therein prosper in every way. I'm here today to use my voice, to share my heart as one who has lived in this city all my life. I have a great love for Shreveport. My husband and I have raised our three children here. We have grandchildren who live here. I have worked as a registered nurse in your area hospitals. I ended my nursing career teaching at the university lab level, laboring to educate the future Redshire nurses of tomorrow. Having said that, I want to be quite honest with you and say, from a nurse's heart, that I have great concern for the health of my city. Over the past few years, and I will say, I just retired just a few years ago. I was very busy in what I was doing. But God called me out of the nurse force, right earlier than I even expected that I would be. Uh, to, he said, "You have cared for years for the temporal welfare of the body. I'm calling you to care for the eternal welfare of my body." Over the past few years, I have seen changes that have occurred that I believe have led to an instability that I believe can threaten the well-being and health of Shreveport and our surrounding community in Cattle Parish. I've seen and heard things that have been of great concern to me. As I said earlier, I regret that I have not made my voice heard earlier.
Excuse me, ma'am. Little Ted stand for one minute.
Is that passed by affirmation? Okay.
Okay.
Moves. Thank you.
Okay, can I continue? Okay, thank you. In my concern for our community, I'm here today to ask you, in your role as Commissioners, to be diligent, as, just keep being diligent, to protect our city through the ordinances you pass and the resolutions you speak forth. I ask you to consider those who will live under those ordinances and those resolutions. I would ask first and foremost that you, as our governing leaders, would consult God through prayer and to seek His counsel to determine if the legislation you seek to pass would please Him and honor Him or would it not? Would the legislation you pass benefit the citizens of this city and parish? Or would the legislation open a Pandora's Box and call our city and our parish to be under God's judgment because it did not line up with His divine laws and ordinances? Doing what you do and the decisions you make can have grave consequences. They can also have life-giving and life-sustaining conference, excuse me, consequences. Thank you for letting me speak today, and once again, please accept my apology that I have not prayed for you to the extent that I could have in past years. I will be praying for you in the days to come. On a closing note, I do want to tell you that I am the state co-leader for Intercessors for America, which is a national organization. I'm the state co-leader for Louisiana. If you have any specific prayer requests in the future, I would be happy to be of your service and to engage in prayer for you and for those who you partner with through this prayer organization. Thank you very much.
Paige Hoff Power.
Hi.
Hi. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. And I would like to remind, um, the body that we do have several other cards here, so let's be mindful in extending the time. Thank you.
Uh, before my time begins, my name is Paige Hoff Power, ten sixty-four Gabriel's Turn, Shreveport, Louisiana. I also would like to request that the resolution, before my time begins, of eleven twelve not be englobed, globode, but put to a separate verbal vote by each Cattle Com- Commissioner individually. Additionally, I am speaking as a representative for a large group of people called Shreveporters for Freedom, and we request we be given the full amount of time for people who have presentations, as it is in your bylaws. All time and months are God's in Shreveport, Louisiana. We declare today that June is Family Month, not LGBT Pride Month, a call to uphold God's morality in our city. This petition today is made to the body of Christ, the city council members, the Cattle Commissioners presently trying to declare LGBTQ Pride Month in Shreveport, Louisiana this June two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. This petition is made by the vast majority of families and citizens in Shreveport, Louisiana, who stand for God's biblical testimony of truth that all time is given and governed by Him, the Creator and Sustainer of the universe. Therefore, June and all months are God's months, and no time is rightly declared LGBTQ Pride Month because God is against sexual sin. But today, but today our Shreveport Cattle Commissioners are developing a vote for the resolution to be made again this year, which, to my astonishment, has been the case for the last several years, declaring from their pulpit what God has not declared from His. We unite as one voice in Shreveport today as citizens who renounce all resolutions made by the city council and our Cattle Commissioners, that June is LGBTQ Pride Month, and hereby declare June Family Month perpetually as a righteous response to the breach that today is trying to, to, and has been producing negative consequences ever since it was first declared. For marriage is given as God's covenant of grace for man's well-being and the spiritual and sexual union of one-man husband and one-woman wife, which is ordained by God and established by Him to produce godly offspring, children to be raised up in families and fulfill His purposes in the earth. We remind our city officials of God's highest sovereign order and their duty to uphold His moral law and family structure, and the family structure, which He instituted to safeguard our children and ensure our city remain under His moral blessing of protection instead of sins rightful consequence of judgment. In addition to the word of God affirming God's sovereignty, all our American founding documents, uh, establish that. Um, the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence, and we hereby reaffirm today the Louisiana State Constitution and preamble that we, the people of Louisiana, are grateful to Almighty God for the civil, political, economic, and religious liberties we enjoy and desire to stay in His grace and blessings as a city kept by God. So we officially stand against the agenda items today referred to as, uh, eleven twelve that would continue to allow the abominable declaration over Shreveport. Excuse me, eleven eleven, no, it's eleven twelve, declaration, June LGBTQ Pride Month. We are also against the fruit of those resolutions, which have increased the scope and the number of of pride events taking place in our city today, promoting a sexually-driven mission and the resulting rise in entertainment for it. The resolution's false narrative of protection and equal rights has allowed a small fraction of our city's population to impose their sexual preferences and confusion on the broader community, undermining the religious freedoms and moral conscience of the vast majority of Shreveport American citizens who stand in fear of God, in honor of His word, and in alignment with the Judeo-Christian values and the biblical institution of marriage and family that's foundational for a moral society. I request more time.
Motion to extend for three minutes.
We strongly urge our governing authorities to stop the following LGBT.
I'm sorry, we didn't get a second on that. Before you continue, um, there was a motion for to extend for three minutes.
That was the motion, yes.
Then that was second by Chris Crackman? Commissioner Chris Crackman? Okay, let's vote.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
That's an additional three minutes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right.
And I'm, I'm referring to the eleven eleven or the eleven twelve, whichever the LGBT is.
Commissioner Burrell, it looks like it has not logged your vote, if you could. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, you may continue.
That motion carried. Did y'all hear me?
You can continue.
All right. Okay. Uh, "We strongly urge our governing authorities to stop the following LGBT pride events happening now in our city, seeking to normalize an immoral sexual lifestyle in Shreveport, compromising the integrity of our city parks and institutions, as well as the safety and innocence of our children, families, and communities. Number one, field gay. This event openly promotes LGBT pride in our neighborhood parks, attempting to draw in the young and impressionable into a gay-sex lifestyle. This has been going on for five years at, um, at least at AC Steer Park. Such gatherings are falsely portrayed as harmless, yet they cloak a lifestyle of serious sin against God and one's own body, leading to both natural and spiritual consequences and conviction, not shame or unjust treatment towards them by society, which is how these resolutions falsely betrayed the LGBT pride need for a celebratory month in our city of open perversion, which has been used to increase sexually immoral entertainment, not equal rights. Number two, queer prom. This event invites sixteen-year-old minors to attend an adult LGBTQ party where the gay-sex lifestyle is celebrated as a focus. This is predatory baiting of innocent minors and should be an illegal act if not, if it is not already. Number three, drag shows. Over nine drag shows are promoted this two thousand twenty-five as entertainment, entertaining ways to celebrate LGBTQ pride in Shreveport. These events showcase men and women dressing up in clothes of the opposite sex and behaving provocatively. This sexual perversion of God's natural order and identity of men and women should not be promoted by city council and Cattle, and Cattle Commissioner resolutions, when in fact it is a high state of complete confusion. God's word condemns such acts in cities, as demonstrated in the historical account of His judgment against Sodom and Gomorrah, where the city's sexual sin brought the consequences of both cities' complete destruction. As highlighted above, our current trajectory in Shreveport is disregarding God's divine moral law on this matter and the warning found in it, which, if not reversed, will lead to generations lost to sexual sin and ultimate judgment of our city, for the consequences of sin are spiritual, moral, and physical death. Before you today, we acknowledge God as the supreme judge and authority over Shreveport, and we present His biblical word as fact, that June and all months are God's months. And there is no time that is given to us by God that is not governed by His truth, Holy Spirit, and divine moral law, and as a city, we desire to live in the grace and bless, in His grace and blessings. So to restore righteous pride and dignity back to Shreveport families and the month of June, we hereby declare by our own declaration as the body of Christ, June Family Month perpetually in our city. This will begin to realign Shreveport with God's commandments, promises to heal, prosper, and protect us with a wall of family more firmly supported and in place as a protection against harm, temptations, and confusion targeting our children and the identity, and their identity as children of God. Lastly, we caution all elected officials to act in alignment with the moral mandate bestowed on them by God and their constituents, to use the authority given to make righteous decisions that will morally prosper Shreveport, not bring us under judgment. Aligning with God and His higher way for the families and citizens of Shreveport on this matter will be evidenced by a city council and Cattle Commissioner resolution declaring June Family Month. Thank you. And it was eleven twelve, eleven twelve, that is.
Eleven eleven, I believe.
Eleven eleven.
Thank you.
Whether it's eleven eleven or eleven twelve, I'm discussing the LGBT resolution item today.
Thank you. The next card I have is Mrs. John Glover.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
John Glover, ninety-one hundred Walker Road, apartment two seventeen, Shreveport seven eleven eighteen.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, as I always do, I peruse the work session agenda. And, um, the item that was just spoken to, it disturbs me as well. But more so, what disturbs me is that we never discuss anything here at these work sessions, hardly. You know, I thought a work session is the time for us to address the agenda items, the legislation that you are bringing before yourselves and us, the public, giving us insight into what you all are proposing. Though you may have had committee meetings or whatever else, we, the public, don't always have access or don't attend those meetings. And that could be on us, but then it's too on you all too, because you represent us. At the end of the day, it is incumbent that we give decision, give some, some attention to what we present here in this chamber. You know, we say this is the people's chamber. Oftentimes, the people don't always believe that. It just depends on the circumstances and the situations. We are the people. You are the people as well. But you are the elected people that we have entrusted to do the bidding for ourselves, but not with a blank check. So when we rise to bring before you all and, and concern, we just ask that you listen to what we have to say. You don't have to respond, because I know that is not the norm. But oftentimes, we do get rebuttal. We don't need it if it's going to be in a derogatory manner. What we propose and what we expect and what you expect from us is respect. That's it. Give us the respect that you're asking us to give you. So when you address these issues on your agenda, share the information with us. Don't have us deciding for ourselves what this action item's supposed to mean, when you may have something totally different in your hearts and minds as to what you're supporting or even proposing. So I ask again that our work sessions indeed begin to mirror a work session. Not that just we're going to advance what is brought before you all without even discussing it. And then it just makes the, uh, meeting longer on Thursdays. You have eighteen resolutions on this agenda, eighteen. And I tried to find information on at least sixteen, because two were just added here today. See, I'm still in the dark. I don't know what you're proposing to me. And though those resolutions may identify persons or a position or a mission, if you don't tell me what it is, I don't know. So you leave it to me to surmise for myself what that action will be with regards to what your intent intends to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I don't have any other cards. Next item, please.
That brings us, uh, forward to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is Visitors. And we don't have scheduled Visitors today, so we can move forward to Reports, uh, where you do have an admin report attached.
All right. Mrs. CEO.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Just want to update you that we are, um, marketing the Cattle Ready Emergency Alert System. I'm trying to get more of our citizens to sign up as we get more into the rainy season. Um, you can go to cattleready.org, uh, to sign up. We'll, um, also have billboards, and we're recording some PSAs to encourage our citizens to sign up. The census for juvenile, we have seventeen, uh, in detention, um, five OJJ, twenty-six in CCC, four hundred fifty-two probation cases. We were asked to provide census on Cattle Correctional Center. The last report we had, we had a, a total population of fourteen ninety-three, and eleven hundred and fifty-eight of those are pre-trial detainees. We did want to inform you that, uh, Mr. Chuck Wilson, our property standards person, uh, is retiring, and his last day is June eighteenth. And our facilities and maintenance director is retiring, and his last day is July twenty-fifth. So we'd want to congratulate these persons. We will be recognizing them, um, later, uh, but did want to, uh, let you know, um, sad to see them go, but we do wish them the best. And that concludes the administration report. We'll take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. CEO. I think, um, the announcement of Mr. Wilson retiring, Director Wilson, was announced earlier at our meeting, so they kind of beat you to that. But we, um, some of us who were at the committee meeting were able to offer our congratulations to him and thank him for his service to Cattle Parish. I do not see any other Commissioners on board for any questions or comments for Mrs. Administrator.
Is this, is this like, um, is this communicated too?
If you have any questions for administration, please get on the board. Okay. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam CEO, have we been in contact with the, uh, Job Corps, uh, the city to see whatever it is that we can and cannot do at this particular time? Because there's all kind of rumors flying out here, uh, about those students that was actually assigned to the, uh, Job Corps. Uh, I hear homelessness. I hear some kids can't get back home. So like I said, it's all kind of things going on. I'm just wondering, have we made any contact to see whatever it is we can and cannot do to assist them at this particular time?
Yes, sir. We have made contact and offered our assistance to try to relocate folks. There are persons that, uh, it's my understanding that, um, they were given until tomorrow for all, um, students to leave the facility. Uh, there are students that, uh, are homeless. Um, and so they're, uh, taking every step to try to relocate those folks and try to find somewhere for them to go. Um, but yes, we've offered our, uh, assistance in trying to make sure that everyone has somewhere to go, um, when they leave. But it is, it's short timeframe to get everyone out in place by tomorrow.
I guess an add-on to that would be just for the public to know, what is it that we can do at this particular time? Uh, I know you don't have all the information right now today, understandably, but what are some of the possible options that we could assist the, uh, young people within the Job Corps?
So just, uh, through our, um, emergency appropriation for relocation, we could, we're just trying to, uh, help them, um, with contacts and information about where you can relocate the students. As far as their operations, they received, my understanding is, they received a, a directive from the, uh, Department of Labor to close, and so, um, in order to remain open, they would have to get direction from the federal government in that regard. So I, I'm not, uh, sure what the Commission can do in that regard, but we are. So I'm not sure what the commission can do in that regard, but we are working to try to help relocate the students.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartheron. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, I know that some of you have already thanked Chuck Wilson and Kevin Lawrence for their service, but I wanted to extend my personal thank you to both these gentlemen. They've always been very helpful and supportive and done wonderful job and been responsive to my calls and inquiries. So thank you for your service to the citizens of Cattle Parish. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. I don't see any other Commissioners on board. Madam CEO, I do have one request for the Speaker of the House, for our Congressman, and for the Senate to give us a letter. We need a letter sent to them, each of them, requesting what are the plans for the transition of these students in the Job Corps facilities.
Yes, ma'am.
This was a very abrupt closure, and it was a huge blow to our community. This has been a very vital initiative in our communities for a very long time, who it has been there to uplift our children who have been at risk. It has provided, you know, the supply and demand to our workforce, and we need some answers. We know that some of these children who are attending the Job Corps are not from Cattle Parish, if it is in our willhouse to be able to get them back to their respective areas. But this is a task that is way too large for us as the parish, as the city of Shreveport. This is federal funding. We started to receive calls at 4:43 on Friday evening that children were being put out the facility with nowhere to go and no explanation. Earlier that day, we received a message through Facebook that they would be closing effective June 30th. And less than eight hours later, the doors were closed. I do know that the Department of Labor filed for an extension, apparently where it was too late to be received. But we need to know where we are and how are we moving forward, because this is totally unacceptable for our community. And we need some answers.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along that same line, I've been receiving calls because Job Corps is actually in my district. And I have worked with Job Corps for the 25 years that I've been in public office, try to help close up streets over there, to deal with a lot of the safety issues. And we have over 300 youngsters, should I say, young people that we don't know what to do with, along with staff. So to say the least, I'm quite disappointed in the closure of the Shreveport Job Corps Center with little or no notice. The Department of Labor, under this tyrannical administration, decided to scrap this important workforce and economic development program. The elimination of this program has forced many of our young people out on the street because they have no place to go with little or no hope, a bleak future, if not certain doom. I call upon our Congressman, especially my Congressman, Cleo Fields, and specifically my former state legislative colleague and my former Congressman and Speaker, Mike Johnson, who served in the capacity as a majority political leader and third in line to the presidency to not allow this program closure. It is a moral travesty to throw these young people out in the street with no hope. That's what Commissioner Jones just got to praying. What you do to the least of my brother, you also do to me. So it bothers me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. See, no other Commissioners on the board. Admin report, but we are going into communique, so if you need to get on for communique or reports or any other related items, please get on the board at this time. All right. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Common Ground Community is a nonprofit in my district. It's at 6806 Southern Avenue. They're asking the community to help them out with their food pantry. They're in need of small jars of peanut butter, canned proteins, and hearty soups. So if you all are in a position where you have some of those things extra in your pantry at home or, you know, are able to go get some from the store and donate to Common Ground Community, I think would be a great thing. They are an excellent organization that has been very vital in District 6 and the Cedar Grove community. The children love hanging out there. It's a safe place for them to be. They do feedings and community events every Thursday. They have a community garden there on the grounds. So they're short a few items, peanut butter, canned proteins, and hearty soups. So if you can do that, again, that address is 6806 Southern Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. The Chair recognizes Vice President Ken Everstine, Senior.
I call upon our Christian community in Cattle Parish to contact the Job Corps Center and see what they can do to help. You know, there's countless amount of churches in Cattle Parish. So many people profess to be Christians. The prayer and the scripture that was just read, you know what I mean? But where are the Christian communities? And I just saw on television the other day, I think Trump praised Johnson as being a Christian and a man of the Bible, you know. Where is the compassion? And once again, like Commissioner Burrell says, Cleo Fields need to step up to the plate, our state senators, our state representatives. I haven't heard anything. Now, I got a wealth of emails about an issue that's on the table today, but I have not seen not one email about trying to help the plight of these poor students over there at the Job Corps Center. And this isn't anything just Cattle Parish. It's nationwide. Our colleagues that we've just had a conference with, they are going through the same thing. But where are the Christian communities? Where are all of our elected officials, school board, city council? Now, if the Job Corps was in good shape, was expanding, gonna get 300 more students, gonna spend $3, $4, $5, $6 million to expand the facility, everybody and their mom would be over there wanting to take credit and applauding. Where is the compassion? Where is the morality? Where is the Christian spirit of this entire community and all of its elected officials? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everstine. Seeing no one else on the board to speak, next item.
Okay. So that brings us to President's report.
All right. At this time, the Chair would like to recognize Clerk Jeff Everstine.
Oh, thank you so much. If we could, this is a great opportunity to allow our interns who are working with us this summer to come and introduce themselves real quick. They started last week, and they've been doing a really great job. They may look familiar because all three of them are returning from last year. Nevin, of course, has been with us for a couple of years now. And so we want to invite them to come and introduce themselves. It's been great to see them grow even in the past year. They've done a lot of good work, and we look forward to having another productive summer with this great team. So if y'all would like to, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon. How y'all doing? I'm a student athlete at Southern Shreveport and I'm major in radiology.
All right. What's your name? Thank you, Jacob. Welcome back.
Good to see y'all again.
Good to see you.
Once more, here we are again. My name is Nevin Oliver. I'm a senior psychology major at ULM. I plan to graduate this December with my bachelor's in psychology, and I hope to return in January to continue my education in psychology or switch routes into counseling, whichever way I go. I'm fine with either way. It's good to see y'all again.
Good to see you as well. Welcome back.
Good afternoon. My name is Finesse Robinson. I'm a senior at Magnet High, and I'm glad to be back working with y'all. Thank you.
All right. Welcome back. Thank you all for your service. Glad to have you all back, and they were working hard this morning at the LSU pilot celebration. We appreciate you so much. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to introduce them. If you have nothing else that, would you like to move forward to the next item?
No, I do have, just something very brief here. I've already made my request to administration for the letters to be sent to our federal government. I also just wanted to say again, congratulations to the LSU's pilots, my colleagues, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Grace Ann Blake, who is still sporting her hat from the celebration this morning. I think Commissioner Jones was out there somewhere in the audience, as well as Commissioner Thomas. It was a great celebration. We are very excited for what they are doing in Cattle Parish and the city of Shreveport, and it was an honor to be able to be there to celebrate them on today. I also want to end with this. I want to share this quote that says, "Beware of any Christian movements that demands the government to be an instrument of God's wrath, but never a source of God's mercy, his generosity, or his compassion."
Amen.
Thank you. That will conclude my President's report.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Thank you. That brings us, we don't have any old business scheduled today, so we can move forward to new business, where we do have quite a few items. Would you like me to just begin at the beginning?
Yes, and if you would, just read them collectively, and then we will do one.
Okay, that sounds great. The 11.1 is to consider advancing Ordinance 6547 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund to expand the technical review committee and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That comes from the Long Range Planning Committee. And you said you'd like me to just go ahead and read through all of them, and then you'll make a motion as, or would you like to just take them up one at a time?
Yes, go ahead with that one. 6547 and 6548?
The next one is the Ordinance 6548 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Debt Service Fund and the Capital Outlay Fund to provide an appropriation of $10 million for the construction of a pickleball park and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That comes from the Economic Development Committee. And both of those items originate from your committees. Both of those items would be contemplated for introduction on Thursday. And because of the change to the date of the Juneteenth holiday, both of those items have been advertised for public hearing and final adoption on your first meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion from Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and seconded by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to englobo and advance Section 11 of the agenda.
All right. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Jones. Would you like to speak on the motion?
No, thank you. I invite all Commissioners that they would like to speak on their individual resolutions, or we can wait till Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two issues I'd like to bring up, if I may. The first one is on Ordinance 6547. Can we get some color around how we would be changing the review committee for the Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund?
Okay. And the point of order would be for legal?
I'll address it to Ms. Bryant.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'll have to defer to legal.
I tried. Commissioner Atkins, the committee recommends that two community members and one member of the Planning and Zoning Commission be added to the technical review committee.
Two community members and one member of Planning and Zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And on the second item, per the request of one of our speakers, I'd like for 11.11 to be considered separately.
Is that a request for a friendly amendment?
Yes, I guess it'd be a request for a friendly amendment to pull 11.11 from the englobo.
Okay. Do you accept that?
I don't.
Okay. All right. That it, Commissioner Atkins?
It was, what was the response from the?
No.
It was, I don't.
Okay. There's got to be another way that I could pull that.
You can get back on the board and make a substitute motion if you like.
All right, I'll do that.
All right. Commissioner Gregory Young.
I would like.
I can't hear you.
I would like, Madam President. Thank y'all so much.
Is that better?
Madam President, I would like for this to not be included in the englobo.
For what?
Because I would like for the administration to bring up the Director of Parks and Recreation to make a brief presentation. And I also think that there's some additional information that the administration wanted to provide.
Okay. Commissioner Young, just for the public hearing, I understand what you're asking, but if you would state which ordinance number that you would like to be removed from this englobo.
Thank you, Madam President, 11.2.
Okay. That's Ordinance Number 6548. You would like for it to be removed? Or would you just like discussion on it during the englobo? Because you can still have the discussion without removing it.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you so much.
And at this time, if you would like to bring up Director Patrick Wesley, would you please come up?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
We're having technical difficulties with the teams and the Zoom link since it was a last-minute request. But I can pull up the slideshow, if that's okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and get started, everybody.
Yes, I was going to say that while they're pulling that up, if you want to go ahead and get started with the presentation that we're going to see.
Well, good afternoon again. Patrick Wesley, Director of Cattle Parish Parks and Recreation Department. We are here to talk briefly a little bit about pickleball. Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in the country. It's a movement, basically a global movement, that if you don't stay in front of it, you get behind of it real quickly. I've talked to or received email communications, I've talked to several thousands of your citizens around Cattle Parish who want and need dedicated pickleball courts. And they are very frustrated because they're having to wait two to three hours to play. And it's a phenomenon, it's a phenom now, that's a movement that's moving forward. And I think we need to have more dedicated pickleball courts throughout Cattle Parish. We are personally doing some recreational courts, resurfacing in about 10 courts, but that's just not enough. And we would like to ask your permission to build a dedicated park and facility. Let me give you some statistics on pickleball. Again, pickleball is a global movement. It's against the fastest-growing sport. Over 48 million people are playing it throughout the United States. Pickleball participation has grown an average of 223% over the last three years. There's a myth that pickleball is for older adults. But now, players 25 to 34 make up the largest percentage of pickleball players in the country. So this is an intergenerational sport where three generations can go and play at the same time. The grandparents, the parent, as well as the grandkids can play at the same time. And we just have not seen a phenom like this since the soccer youth movement in 1994, when the World Cup came to the United States for the first time. The shortage of dedicated courts remains a concern to pickleball players around the country and in the parish of Cattle. The industry needs about $855 million to fund 24,000 courts that are needed across the country. And Cattle Parish is not, is in a situation where we need those courts also. It's literally an arms race now to build pickleball facilities regionally, nationally, locally. Springdale, Arkansas is building one, which is about five hours here. They're building a $50 million development with 23 indoor courts and 30 courts, outdoor courts. West Monroe is building a 23, has built a $23.8 million development with 16 indoor courts, 16 volleyball courts, eight basketball courts. Youngsville, the Lafayette area down south is building a $10 million development, eight outdoor pickleball courts, six indoor pickleball courts, and tennis. eight outdoor pickleball courts, six indoor pickleball courts and uh, ten, tennis courts. And uh, Tyler, Texas is doing some private developments with twelve indoor pickleball courts and twenty-five outdoor courts. The um, the Metroplex, the Dallas Metroplex, that's considered our size. The, the Plano's, the McKinney's, uh, the Grand Prairies, uh, they are manipulating the pickleball industry right now and developing pickleball courts with thirty-four courts and twenty-five courts and fifty courts um, at their, in their respective towns and uh, municipalities. So um, how did we get to this point? We had a number during our master plan, we had a number of, had a number of um, of public meetings during our master plan, which, which you all adopted and approved in twenty-twenty-three. But in twenty-twenty-two, we did a series of public meetings. And pickleball conversation dom- dominated all the public meetings, all the folks, focus groups. And they want to know, when can we get more pickleball? Or when can we get more pickleball facilities? Where can we get a dedicated pickleball park facility? So, and we wanted, and they also wanted us to look at signature parks. And we also found out that we did not have a signature park in Southeast Shreveport. So uh, we started looking um, at in some, at some facilities and some land and some partnerships in Southeast Shreveport. And we met with Gary Lash and um, um, he offered to, if we could identify, if we could get a pickleball park built, that the YMCA would manage that facility. And we thought that would be a great idea. Uh, it would save some, some, our taxpayers some money without um, without, without managing uh, the facility and without the parish managing the facility. And we don't have a, a signature park in Southeast Shreveport. So we thought that it would be a great location to uh, um, put the facility. Now, the, the Southeast Shreveport site is um, is in uh, John Atkins District officially, but it, it crosses over three s- three mile radius of, of two other districts, which is uh, Commissioner Ron Carthorne in District Ten and Grace Ann Blake in District Eight. So uh, can you pull the renderings of that? I'm kind of, since we're off base here. If you, you can go right there. The, if you look at that location, that is uh, that's off East Flonore. That's off the two-hundred block of East Flonore. And you know, the Kroget Market, Marketplace, just right off the Kroget Marketplace, where Silver Star and all those eateries at. The pickleball park was sitting immediately behind that. Uh, there was a ten-track, ten-acre track there that the pickleball park will, will, will rest there. As well as the Y has agreed to add, not only manage the pickleball park, but agree to build additional soccer fields in that area also. Uh, we think this will be a great idea. Uh, the development is already there. The water lines, sewage lines, everything, the, the pre-development is there for us that will help us save some money in this construction project. And we think this will be a great idea uh, to, to locate a pickleball park here. We're looking at some renderings. Uh, we want to look at a nineteen um, dedicated courts that we would like to offer if you go, go through the renderings here. And um, this will be a state-of-the-art pickleball park, one of the first in the southern region here. Uh, again, ten million dollars, nineteen courts. One of the courts, one of the nineteen courts will be a championship uh, court that will seat over a thousand spectators. And uh, this will be a, a real driver, economic driver for Cattle Parish um, as well as all the citizens of Cattle Parish. So we're excited about this. You can go ahead and through. Um, we'll, we'll get these renderings also on our website. So um, our public can take a look at, at those also. So at this time, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna transition over to, to the administration to talk about um, how we are gonna pay for this, if, if approved and proposed, how we can pay for this and the advantage that uh, we have not managing the facility and allowing a, a uh, a company or a agency like the YMCA to come in and help manage it.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, Commissioners, uh, it are, it's our proposal that we issue revenue bonds to um, construct this facility. Um, we believe that the revenues generated from this facility will cover the, not only the cost of the bonds, but also um, the operations of the facility. Um, a few years ago, uh, we received, uh, we, you all um, approved for a, a, up to a thirty-million-dollar revenue bond issue. We only issued ten million dollars of those. So we'd want to issue ten um, to cover this facility. So it would not be um, from any current fund balance or any current revenues. It would be from um, the bonds and then the revenues generated by the facility would pay the bonds and operating costs. Um, we think that this is the, the best method um, to generate revenues in order to cover um, both the construction as well as operations.
And the fundamental purpose of this uh, project is, there are basically two objectives. One is to provide a venue where our local and regional pickleball players can play. And secondly, um, coming from Mr. Young's um, committee is how we can make this an economic development driver for the, of the parish. Let me give you just a couple of economic development, national and, and, and local impacts that we can make. The sports travelers spent this year in, in twenty-twenty-four, forty-seven billion dollars in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four in direct spending and, and going to events. Total economic impact nationally of one-hundred-and-fourteen billion, supporting six-hundred-and-sixty-four full-time, part-time jobs across the country. Nine-point-seven billion dollars spent on transportation is driving to and from um, their sporting events. Eight-point-four billion was spent on lodging, generating sixty-three-point-five million room nights. Seven-point-five billion was spent on food and beverages. Okay, so one point, one-hundred-and-nine million non-local attendees traveled fifty miles or more to attend sporting events. So the sports tourism industry is basically saying, if you're not gonna get some of it, somebody else is gonna get some of this money. We gotta be a part of this economic development of sports tourism. Okay, um, some of our uh, other local, a three-day regional pickleball tournament with one-thousand players can generate up to one-point-two million dollars. Um, a three-day tournament can generate up to almost nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Um, today we have uh, Gary Lash, one of our proposed partners for this event, and Stacy Brown with our Convention and Tourism. I would like them to come up briefly for a couple of minutes and, and talk while they're in support of this partnership and this project.
Hello, Commissioners, my name's Gary Lash. I live at twenty-sixteen Waterview Lane, not in the city, but in the parish. Uh, right off of the Parkway and close to both our YMCA's that we operate. This YMCA obviously is out at Forbing. And it would be a great addition to that area of town and to the whole community that we can bring kids to that location, adults. Uh, we can serve the whole city from, from that location conveniently. And it would be a great um, addition to quality of life to also recruit. I've been working with NLEP to recruit other companies to come in as these quality of life issues begin to develop. Uh, we can manage it easily because we have that facility close to it, where we have close to four-thousand uh, members that are coming there now, individuals. That would add to it. And then uh, we could have summer camps that, that would be part of uh, the summer camp rotations into the pickleball during the day. Uh, we have uh, eight courts that we use inside of our, in our three locations, two downtown and three at each location. And pickleballers are wanting to take over the whole thing. So we have some issues with that because we obviously want to have kids playing. But um, we think it would be a great addition to the city, to the community. Uh, not only for the economic development, that's how you really promote these things, but also for local play because everyone is playing pickleball. It's unbelievable. So it's not only for tournaments coming in or people coming in, but it's also for our local citizens, uh, adults and, and young people to come play. So I appreciate your time. Any questions, I'd, I would entertain that you might have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Not quite as tall as Gary. Stacy Brown, six-twenty-nine Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. With Visit Shreveport Basia and the Shreveport Basia Sports Commission. So when Patrick first came and said, we'd love to work on the pickleball area because our master plan also identified pickleball as a great need area and an opportunity area. Um, as we look forward to inviting people to our community, they want to come for a variety of reasons. And one of those is sports. You know, they love to get themselves, as well as their children and their families, involved um, in visiting different communities for sporting activities. So with the proper-sized facilities, you can offer not only great play for locals, but as well as offering great tournaments that bring in economic development. So as Patrick was mentioning, um, and as well as Gary Lash is, by combining those and managing them properly, you can have both. And by having a facility that's large enough to host the bigger tournaments, um, a tournament with as many as a thousand people can generate over a million dollars, just that one tournament in our community. So it brings people in, they eat in the restaurants, they stay in the hotels, they stop by the gas station, um, they go shopping in our uh, great facilities here. So it's a great opportunity to build all aspects of our community. So I would strongly encourage you to consider this as a, a great addition to Cattle Parish.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else that the administration would like to convey to us at this point?
I think that um, concludes the information we wanted to provide. Just wanted to communicate how um, um, great we think that this project will be for our community.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I have several commer- Commissioners who are on the board. I'm glad you all stood, stick around on the front row because I think some of the questions may be to you. Uh, the first one I have is Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, thanks for the report. Um, Mr. Wesley, I just want to make sure that uh, that I've heard it correctly and that everybody else hears it correctly. Uh, in our best estimate, I understand these are always estimates, but in our best estimate, the revenue from this project will pay for both the oper- both the operating costs and the financing costs of the project. And so we break even with respect to, to operating. But we have the line up of the, of what we think might be a million dollars a year in economic development associated with larger tournaments coming into our community. Is that a million dollars an event or a million dollars a year?
Yes, it depends on what, if it's a regional or a local state event. But regional, yes, we can get up to, with a regional event, we could get up to average a thousand players coming in for a regional event, a sanction.
So we'll say, over the course of the year, if we have several large events, it could be, oh, we'll say over a million dollars a year in economic development potential.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Roy Barrio.
Thank you. First of all, I, I'd like for you to define to, for me, and, and maybe this is something that I should know already, a signature park. Um, what, what would you consider a signature park? Do we have one in, in uh, North Shreveport, Central Shreveport, West Shreveport?
In our, in our park system, we call our signature parks is uh, a larger parks. Um, I think Base Park, uh, Walter B. Jacobs, Earl G. Williams, Eddie Jones. These are our large signature parks that we have in our park system.
So we only have three? We don't, we don't have them all over the city?
No, we have somehow small, we have some small little community neighborhood parks. And, and then we have some signature parks that we call signature parks that are our drivers, that people go to, that are heavily um, populated. The uh, PBS Pinchback Park, those are.
Those are signature.
They're our signature heavily populated park that people go to.
We have about four, okay?
Um, and that's why I was saying, we don't have one in Southeast Shreveport.
Okay, my next question is, in terms of the um, given the fact that this is not a novel idea at this point because other people are doing this. You've already stated that there have been several other pickleball parks and they are popping up everywhere. Comparatively speaking to the size that you're, you're trying to bring here.
I can, I can, can you talk?
Comparatively speaking to the size that you're trying to bring here, compared to the others that you, that you know about, uh, what is the, the uh, revenue that's generated from a park about this size? Going back to.
The consultant, our consultants have talked to us and made the recommendation that for this area, for this region, a nineteen to twenty-one court, dedicated pickleball court or park would be feasible for this region and can take care of a majority of our regional pickleball tournaments in this area. And also would take care of the local play that we need additional courts for local play. So it's kind of being a twofold force of project. But a regional tournament can, we can get up to a thousand players to register for a regional tournament. And that could bring us in an economic impact of one, a little over one to one-point-two million dollars per event. So the, these are USA Pickleball sanctioned tournaments, not just a, uh, a person just doing a tournament, but these are sanctioned tournaments through the national governing body.
Okay, since this is out, uh, Ellery Road, and Ellery Road is pretty congested as it is, bringing in a thousand players and a mass number of spectators, uh, what about the traffic congestion?
Well, it's, it's right off of thirty-one, thirty-two, which is basically one-point-three miles off of the Ellery Road. If you're going east or west, it's off of one-point-three miles, just right off. It's very convenient because it's right off of thirty-one, thirty-two. Um, again, the development with the restaurants and the businesses there that can support the pickleball uh, community is already there. The development is there. Um, the management of running the facility is, is, is ran by the gold standard. It was YMCA is the gold standard of managing and running recreation facilities across the country. So it's, it's, it's just a win-win. The unique, what is popular about this, and you've seen all the support letters that we, that you have, that we sent out to you today, is that uh, the uniqueness of this partnership. Um, we are nationally accredited parks and recreation, partnering with a gold standard uh, agency that facilitate recreation facilities. And we, we are have, this project is endorsed by USA Pickleball, which is the nationally governing body of pickleball throughout the country. So we have endorsement letters from, from all of us. And uh, uh, the uniqueness of this partnership is what's gonna make this, this successful.
Well, do you feel, and this is my final question to you, although I, I, I support the idea of a, of a pickleball uh, facility, anything that would enhance our uh, area, but one that is more centrally located, do you think for some reason that would not be feasible?
Uh, we, we're gonna, we're gonna do our Parks and Recreation. We're gonna do our grassroots development of, of pickleball, just like we do baseball, just like we do the Nature Center. We're gonna get in and establish grassroots programs within our middle schools, within our cattle school system. As you see, I've already met with uh, Keith Burden. Um, he's supportive of this project and where it is. We're gonna work with Sportran. We've already dotted the i's and crossed the t's of how we're gonna develop pickleball sport uh, from a grassroots effort. So that won't be an issue, uh, just like baseball is not an issue, just like nature's is not an issue. We're gonna develop, we're not gonna let um, someone being from North Shreveport, that be a barrier. We're gonna get kids to that facility and make sure that they are part of the development of pickleball in Cattle Parish.
Okay, well, um, given that we have two Y's on that end, um, how's that, how's that going based upon, you know, discussion that we had before about bringing, bringing youngsters from other parts of, of town to our new Y's that are, that are at these locations?
It happens, it happens all the time. We, we take our kids to.
How well is that working?
Oh, it's, no, people, I think people want to feel safe. People want to play in, in great facilities, state-of-the-art facilities. They want to feel safe. They want to go where there, there's not inconvenience of having to drive another ten minutes or to get something to eat, or to drive another thirty minutes to, to lounge or for hotel accommodations. But there's, there's, you know, we facilitate a large number of Parks and Recreation programs all throughout Cattle Parish, and that has never been an issue. And I've done it eighteen years with, with the city of Shreveport, that's never been an issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrio. Commissioner Ron Carthorne.
Thank you, Madam President. I have several questions. I'll just throw them out there and you answer them as you can and go from there. First of all, ten million dollars. How soon is the possibility that we recoup this money? is the possibility that we recoup this money for our citizens? That's the first one. Second question is competition with other cities. I keep hearing all these other cities that are building as well, and one thing I've learned in life, the more people that build, the likelihood of your, of people coming to you, it goes down. Are all these courts going to be outside as well?
Yes. This will be an outdoor facility. It'll be 19 courts. Eight to 10 of those courts will have shaded, shaded structure over them, and it'll be concrete post-tension. And we'll have a clubhouse, and we'll have 19 courts with bleachers around them. To maintain our park aspect, we'll have a walking jogging trail around the pickleball park. The Y will invest in some additional soccer fields to give it that park look. We'll have some playground equipment out there, pavilions. So it'll, it'll be a signature park in Southeast Shreveport.
And again, I asked about the outdoor. I can't speak for anyone else, but you know, here in Shreveport, Louisiana, you probably wouldn't catch me out there in July, based on the temperatures that we get. But again, I'm not a pickleball player, so I leave that one alone. The other thing is I like the idea of the soccer. It just concerns me that in light of everything that's going on in America right now, $10 million investment of the citizens' money, you know, I'm, I'm really struggling with that on a personal level, okay? Not to say it's not a great idea, not to say I could not endorse it, but again, I'm struggling with it with everything that's going on. Everything I see is going down, 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 money-wise, when it comes to government. But in the same breath, if it's something that's gonna put our parish on the map, in particular, if we're going to recoup the citizens' money, I could possibly support that. But right now, I'd be very forthright. I'm very ambivalent at this particular time.
Commissioner Cawthorn, that's why we propose a facility where the revenue generated, so if the citizens use the facility and they spend money there, then those monies, we're not asking the citizens for anything additional through taxes. We're asking them, and as well as those citizens outside our community. If you enjoy pickleball and you want to use the facilities, you pay a certain fee and you're willing to do that, obviously that's optional. So if you can't do it, then you won't do it. But if they do, then we would take those monies and then pay for the cost. So this is much different than when we issue general obligation bonds where we ask the citizen for a tax in order to pay the bonds. In this case, we're using the revenues generated. So from a citizen's standpoint, we're not asking them for anything additional, and if they cannot do it, then they won't do it. In far as the financing, the bonds are 20-year bonds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cawthorn. Okay, seeing other commissioners on the board. All right, the chair will recognize Commissioner Gregory Young.
Right. I just had... Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam President, just one other question that I had. I'm a bit more audacious than probably most. At the same time, you know, as many of my family members have described me, I'm kind of tight when it comes to money. So I spend most of my efforts in analyzing how to move forward with that as a basis. You know, I'm very conservative when it comes to spending, but at the same times, I'm a visionary. And I imagine our area becoming a melting pot for sports activities. Let me ask you this, given the way I've just kind of described, you know, how I approach this, is there any discussion about pickleball becoming an Olympic sport?
Yes, yes. Pickleball will become an Olympic sport. I forgot what year, but it will become an Olympic sport. In Alabama now, it's a sanctioned high school state championship sport now for high school. There are scholarships for girls and, and males to play college pickleball. You'll see a lot of the colleges either have it as a full club sport or full NCAA sport, but pickleball is here to stay. I'm telling you, pickleball is here to stay. And again, Commissioner, thank you. You all took us through a rigorous dotting i's and cross the t's through our economic committee meetings, and we appreciate that. So we had to come prepared. Mr. Atkins, thank you. But, but I want Cattle Parish to be on the trending side. I'm getting so many complaints that we, we start to bring things 10 years after somebody else has it. And I think we, I don't think our citizens deserve that. I think it's, I think we need to start setting trends and being the catalyst of that development and not being two decades behind. When, when, when things are trending now, we can't wait 10 years to have pickleball, or we won't get the economic development and the benefit from it.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's all. We're just, we're just at a point where our consultants are saying, "This is it. This is your window to, to, to get a piece of this billion-dollar industry. If not, somebody else is about to get that." So we want to, we want to be on the forefront of that. And, and I get the calls every weekend, or people are out in Little Rock or Dallas Metro, "Why we don't have this in Cattle Parish? Why we don't have this in Shreveport?" You know, it's from baseball complexes, it's from multi-sports facilities, it's from pickleball, you know. So, so these are your citizens calling me daily.
Right. Director, Wes, let me, let me, let me just say this, and I'll kind of be finished with my conversation on this segment. What I imagine, if, if we're successful in our consideration of this project, I imagine this location becoming like an Olympic training center for people who wants to contest and compete with pickleball. That's one thing. And I would just like to speak more broadly. You know, years and years ago, back when I was much, much younger, I have a sister live in Atlanta. She moved there about, maybe about 25 years ago, my baby sister. And of course, I was curious as to about, as to where she was going, what that was about. So I started on a deep dive on Atlanta. Most people may not realize it, but Atlanta has a, in the city, has a population of about 400,000 people. But the metropolitan area of Atlanta is one of the largest in the country. It's about 6 million people. And so if the only way we approach our urban areas in terms of how it can grow, if we're only looking inside of the urban areas and not really being able to appreciate the dynamic of growing in the suburban areas, and how that contributes to the health and, and well-being and quality of life inside of the city. Now, I think there are things that we can do inside of the city, in the urban. I've been a big champion of that since, you know, everybody knows, I've been a big champion of doing things within our districts, and I continue to be a strong proponent of that. But I think we need to be just a little bit more imaginative and need to be more dynamic in how we approach economic development. Because I think it is important that we, we are visionaries. And I think when we make decisions that are only, we're only looking at how it benefits us today, then what we do, what we do unintentionally is that we bind the future government organizations like the commission or like the state of Shreveport. We bind them in the future so that they can't do things. They don't have the financial flexibility. And so I love this approach, that we're doing things that are gonna pay for itself instead of, instead of putting these burdens on the taxpayers. And, and of course, and I'll be through, but let me just say this. I think that any time that we make these type of investments, particularly when we are resting alone on what the taxpayers are doing, their contribution, I think we need to take it very, very seriously, no matter what the project is, if we ask, asking the taxpayers to finance it. Because you're talking about, if an individual don't pay their taxes, you're talking about taking away their primary residence or putting a lien on their primary residence. And so when we start talking about taking taxpayers' money doing anything, I think it needs to be so critical, so vital to our community, that it warrants this type of lien on a person's property. This doesn't seem to be one of those instances, because as it's been conveyed to us, this will pay for itself. We're not asking, we're not burdening the taxpayers with it. And of course, we can't see the future. We don't know. One of the things I learned in undergraduate school when I took a very challenging course in statistics, everything about the future is probabilities. Everything is between 0 and 1. Nothing about the future is certain. So we can't make decisions within the guarantees as to how it's gonna unfold in, in the future. But based on the analysis, based on the data that we've been able to collect, it is more probable that this is gonna be successful than not. But thank you so much, and I really appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Atkins, and if we could, we've spent some time on this. Let's wrap this up.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, thank you very much. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we pull 11.11 from the englovo and vote on this matter separately.
Sir.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor. If you would, Mr. Clerk, remove the motion to amend. Commissioner Young was able to get the information that he would want it for the commissioners to be disseminated and have discussions, so we can remove that amendment and add the new amendment of Commissioner Atkins to remove 11.11, and it was seconded by Commissioner Chris Crackman. Am I correct? I don't see it on the board. Okay?
I believe we have that correct. So it...
It's coming up now.
What we had was initially a motion to englovo in advance, and then there was a, some discussion about potentially a change to that. That was withdrawn.
Yes.
And so then now that motion was on the floor, and then Commissioner Atkins just made the motion to remove 11.11 from that englovo in advance, and that was seconded by Commissioner Crackman.
Got it. All right, everyone understands what we're voting on first? Is the substitute motion to remove 11.11? If you were in support, yes. If you're not in support, no. That'll be the first item that we'll take up. Please vote.
I'm sorry. Okay. And let's see, that motion does carry with six in support, five in opposition, and one absent.
Okay.
So now, so that amends the motion. So the motion on the floor now is to englovo in advance, all items except for 11.11.
Okay, before we move to the voting, I have a point of order request from Commissioner Barre. Chair recognizes Commissioner Barre.
Thank you, ma'am. Going back to 11.1, there was a question of, of the number of members that would be a part of that committee. Would it be 10, nine, or is it stated? That's, that's only yet with Jones facility.
The number of the members?
Yeah, because she, they added three people. And I'm not clear now how many we have. I'm trying to get to a odd number.
I think it's nine.
Chair, long-range, head of development, two civilians.
Thank you.
And a member of the PCC.
That's 10.
10?
Yes.
We had, you know, we had discussed about an odd number.
An additional community member.
If you will...
An additional community member will make it.
Okay. Is that in here?
One second. I'm gonna yield to legal because I think we're making a change on that, so we would have to do something different.
Have to amend it.
You will have to amend it on Thursday, or actually on final passage. Sorry. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Does that satisfy your question? Okay. All right. So at this time, we're now voting?
Will we restate it?
At this time, we're now voting on the englovo of the items with the exception of 11.11.
Englovoing and forwarding, Madam President?
In advance. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Epperson is in favor. Okay, and that motion passes with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. And so that clears the majority of the agenda. It brings us to 11.11.
Okay.
Which is to advance special resolution recognizing Pride Month.
All right. Commissioner Atkins, are you on the board to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for indulging our request to pull 11-11 from the englovo. You know, it's not my objective to have a fight here, an argument here. You know, I wish we could focus more on the blocking and tackling of our activities and less on, you know, fighting about things. But I do see that it does cause, that this issue does cause some controversy, does cause some concern, and, and for that reason, I'd rather not have it on our agenda. I just don't see the need to have it on the agenda. I'm sure that others feel differently. But I just wanted to let you all know my thoughts. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to clarify the need for this to be on our agenda. There is an overwhelming amount of citizens here in Cattle Parish who do pay taxes and who, more importantly, do vote. Not only that, as it's been expressed by your wonderful comments, if I was to say that I feel that women, 20, only women 25 and under should have braids in their heads, that would exclude two people in this room right now. Once again, that's my opinion. I don't choose to dictate how you live your life. I don't choose to dictate your beliefs upon anyone else. I do not choose to admonish Muslims for not eating pork. It is not our job to put our beliefs upon others. I'm gonna yield, because I don't want to, I'll, I'll say that for Thursday, but I do feel that it's important for us to... Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. See no other discussion? Okay. Commissioner Chris Crackman?
Yeah, I'd like to call for a vocal vote. A roll call vote.
What is your reason for calling for a roll call vote? The machine's working, correct?
Do I have to have a reason?
You have to have a second.
Yes. You do?
Respectfully, I think it's, it's an incredibly contentious issue. I think putting our names on the screen isn't quite enough. I think saying it out loud is important.
Okay. And that dies for a lack of a second. Please, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cawthorn.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I really didn't want to get in this fight, but the thing is, at this particular time, you know, we've heard different feedback we've heard from the public, those that are here. We've heard Commissioner Jones, we've heard you as well. And the point being, again, a resolution, a resolution is a piece of paper, okay? A resolution does not make anybody anything or any, or do anything against anyone's personal belief. There's a thing called sin, okay? There's a thing called sin, and it covers a plethora of things. And the thing about it is that we keep sidestepping what God says. And the one thing I've learned along the way is that I am not the judge. I am not the judge, and I never want to play the judge. I want to do it publicly, not privately. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cawthorn. See no other discussion? Please vote.
Point of information, what are we voting for?
11.11.
We're voting to advance?
Voting to advance.
Advance, okay.
11.11 to Thursday's agenda.
Okay. One second. The chair recognizes that Commissioner Grace and Blake is on the board to speak. Okay. Commissioner Blake?
From the time that I've come on the commission, I've had problems with resolutions because of how divisive these types of resolutions can be. I like to recognize people for accomplishments. I don't agree with having so many recognitions of Women's Month. And I hear laughter about this, but grandparents' month, and I just feel like that it becomes, from early on, the back and forth debating over the resolutions, that we take away the importance of special days and important days and events. This resolution, and we had a guest today... This resolution, and we had a guest today bring up that these are our work sessions. And this is the place where we should be able to have conversation and discussions, debates. That's what we're here for. I would say we don't receive a ton of communication from our constituents. But when we do receive information and people do come and speak, it is important for us to hear them. It's interesting, I have had people reach out to me that are in agreement with the resolution for recognizing Pride Month. And then I have had people reach out to me against this. I think that there have been some concerns and valid concerns locally about what this means. I actually live across the street from a park where there is an event every year. And I will say, I've not seen anything that is inappropriate, that I would consider not wanting people to see. And I have been to events while I am a hairstylist and own a hair salon. And I have been in very large cities where there have been pride parades and events that I did find offensive because it was sexual in nature. And I think that there is a time and a place for such activities. The activity that is at the park has not had anything like that. But I do know that this is such a divisive issue. I, as a Christian, want to be kind and helpful to everybody. But I also have beliefs that are my core values that I want to respect as well. This is just super tough. And I appreciate the commissioners that wanted to pull it out so that we honored a request from constituents. And I think that this is the time to say, what does a resolution for this mean? Does this mean that we're going to fund events like what were brought to our attention? There are events that are concerning. And what does this mean? What, does this mean we're going to fund events? There are things that people are afraid to say because it's stuff that we never thought we'd have to say in public. I have family members that are openly gay and I have family members that are not. I have friends that are openly gay and friends that are not. I own a business that I recognize and I respect everybody regardless of their personal beliefs. And for me, I just think that I appreciate that we can't have this discussion. And that at times, this is very hard from what people brought for us and said and from what commissioners have said. And so I just want to say thank you for the people that have come and spoken and for those that have reached out to me to tell me how they feel. And I, right now, will be moving forward to move this resolution forward because I've had people reach out with both opinions. So I don't have a clear decision for my constituency. And so I'm just going to be really open with that. And I think that there are people that feel very marginalized. And I will speak out about funding if we're funding events that are sexual in nature. But as a person who's trying to help all people and figure out how to be respectful when we have resolutions, until we have a firmer, I would say stance on resolutions, I'm going to move this forward and just do some thinking this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner, Parliamentarian Thomas, second time around.
I'll do it, ma'am.
Okay. All right, seeing no other discussion, please vote to advance this item.
And Commissioner Epperson is in the affirmative. Okay, and that motion carries. That's eight in support and three in opposition with one absent. And that brings us to the section of your agenda for the Communicating Committee Report, second round.
All right. Commissioners, communicate second time around. Commissioner Carther.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, first of all, happy anniversary to my wife today as I sit here and she's waiting on me to get home.
Happy anniversary.
My condolences, my condolences.
Now, congratulations.
All right, that's it? The chair would like to recognize my oldest son, my junior in college of LSU Baton Rouge, Mr. Carrington Watts is out here with us today. All right, I see, I'm sorry, Vice President Epperson. I'm sorry, I forget your board is down.
Madam Administrator, on our war on litter, I don't know if I misinterpreted what we had in the budget. I think it was maybe some additional personnel in Public Works thinking that maybe a vehicle... Have you seen those vehicles that's on, that travels the interstate from LODG? When people have DOTT, have flats and they got the elevated flashing lights and signage on it. I think we should have a vehicle outfitted like that to show when we are out picking up litter. It gives us a lot of visibility. That vehicle should be special.
Yes, we can look into it.
Could you explore and see what the possibility of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Great point, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say it was a wonderful event today at Festival Plaza recognizing the LSUS pilots. It's an incredible feat. And I want to say thank you so much. Madam President, you did an incredible job with your resolution. The words were perfect. And we are...
I'll second that if I may.
Well, we have some wonderful clerks. I can't take all the credit for that.
Your presentation of it was great. It was wonderful. Thank you. And I also want, wanted to let everyone know that next weekend, and I'm going to remind everybody on Thursday because this is such a great event, is the Sunflower Festival out in Gillum. It is a beautiful festival. And every single person here should go out, take a look, see, take your, your wives, your children and husbands and go see something beautiful in this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, second time around, Commissioner Carther. The popcorn is popping.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Question, Madam CEO, are you speaking tomorrow for the FALCIO?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. And the other thing is, some of us will be spending the day with SWEPco tomorrow as well, learning a lot of different things that's going on there. But again, those of you all that's not going with SWEPco tomorrow, our CEO will be speaking at the FALCIO 11:30 tomorrow.
All right. Thank you for that information. Vice President Epperson?
You say popcorn, I'd be popping champagne, huh?
Now, the popcorn, with one talk, you remember something else, and yeah, just keep going.
All right. I just want to state that LSUS has always been partners with the Veterans Celebration Parade. Their entire athletics department participates each year. So I'm looking forward, I'm going to contact Aaron Smith and make sure that they have a special sign this year when they enter the parade. And we appreciate not only recognizing them for the accomplishments with the, winning the World Series at the baseball tournament, but for their continued and faithful commitment in community activities. Thank you.
All right. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to remind the public of a few events that are going to be happening this weekend. I'll remind everyone on Thursday as well. Excuse me. SocialCon is going to be Saturday. This is a first ever for this community. It is an event that focuses on social media content creators as well as marketing managers locally here in the region. That's going to be Saturday at 10, at 9:00 a.m. at the 11 events. Also, there is, in the, in the respect of health and wellness, Rise Shreveport will be having an adult field day. So if you feel like you still have those skills from high school and you can get out there and run track and, and play baseball like LSUS and tug of war and all those things, they welcome you to please come out there and take plenty of pain medication. It's going to be Saturday at 10:00 a.m.
Over the counter.
Yes, over the counter medication, please. But I'm sure they're going to have waivers out there for you to sign. But this is by Rise Shreveport, which is a local group who, they promote health and wellness every Wednesday and Saturday by providing free, free exercise courses. And like I say, they're doing an adult field day Saturday at 10:00 a.m. That's going to be hosted at Airline High School for the grounds there. But they are a local group here. I'll announce others on Thursday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Thank you, madam. I just want to recognize our recent trip to Nobco. I don't know, I don't remember anybody addressing that issue.
I was going to on Thursday.
Okay, well, you want me to save it to Thursday?
Sure, if you don't mind.
I will do that.
Thank you.
But the other thing is, secondly, I did not chime in on the Pride Month resolution because I try not to judge others. Because being in the position that I've been in and many of us have been in, our community have been in, we've been judged quite a bit. I know we talk about, you know, being a Christian when it's convenient. But I know today, and something that I did get, not just from Nobco, but in dealing with a lot of these issues, you know, there's a lot of Christian nationalists, as we call them, that don't want blacks to have civil rights. I find that as a more important issue than anything that I see on here. But yet and still, we deal with it. We deal with it because we're all part of the human body. And we have to, you know, we have to deal with certain issues. So if we want to start judging, I think we need to really get down and, and, and dig in and, and be more honest about our feelings and our views on things. Because if you can't accept another human being in the color of its skin, I don't find that being Christian at all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly hope that people know that I am not trying to judge people either. An issue came onto the table that, that I didn't put on the table. And I, I was forced to take a position. But I'm not trying to judge anybody. And, you know, unfortunately, up here, sometimes we have to make decisions about things that we're not comfortable making decisions on or would rather not make public decisions on. But unfortunately, in this situation, sometimes we have to make those decisions. That doesn't mean that we're being judgmental. And, and I take offense to the fact that I'm being accused of judging people. And if you don't want me to make a decision, if you don't want me to take a position, then don't put the issue on the agenda. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Stefan Jones? Commissioner Grace Ann Blake?
Thank you. I just want to say something wonderful that just happened, that the bill, the Maggie Grace Act in honor of my daughter, passed the Senate today. And so victims that are giving testimony in parole hearings now can ask to go into executive session so you can share your information privately. Her testimony in a parole hearing went viral. And so this is a very important bill that has passed moving forward. And I didn't realize how big and deep and broad this bill was. But I've had many victims actually reach out to speak to my daughter and I in support and wanting to know what they could do if it didn't pass. And so I'm so grateful that it passed. And I don't know how it passed on the Senate, how many, but when it went through the House, it passed with everybody voting yes. I want to say it was 96 people for it. And there were many, many cosigners for it. So I just want to share that with everybody.
That's good news. Another proven example of our leadership that matters. When we speak, our voices are heard. Thank you for sharing. Commissioner Carther, is this real?
No, no. Oh, I thought I was taking it off.
Okay, Commissioner Burrell?
I'm going to take it off.
All right.
Good job.
Nina Jern.